All the City of Ocean Shores planning and commission meeting to order. We are here in the Ocean Shores Library on Boyd Brown Avenue in Ocean Shores. May I have a roll call Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Bar.
Here.
Commissioner Bees.
Here.
Commissioner Berry.
Here.
Commissioner Wallace, here. Approval of meeting agenda? Next meeting will be nine July, not nine twenty-three as stated here, so that would be the only change that I would propose to the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve today's agenda?
Motion.
A motion, second?
Wait a second, oh, go back, the, the meet. Our next meeting is going to be July?
Nine.
Okay, oh, okay, okay, yeah, here it's August twenty-third, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, so do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion passed. Approval of minutes? For our meeting on June eleventh. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
One correction.
One correction, okay?
Well, I was, I was actually there.
Yes, you were. Yes, you were, and, and it is sub-stated in the minutes, just not at the top.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the minute?
Motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Second, second, all in favor? Motion passed. Do you have any public comments in the room? Yeah, okay. Any public comments from afar?
I have some comments, um, I'm.
Go ahead, Nina.
Hi, thank you for recognizing me. I have a few comments on the matters before the commission, so I will reserve my comments for that time.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from afar?
Thank you, Mark. This is Susan. I have nothing at this time.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, with, there's no other, uh, comments? There was supposed to be a public hearing slated at this time, and, uh, the participants are not here, at least from the city's perspective. So we'll just continue on until they arrive. We are pleased to have Kurt Beckley from the Ocean Shores Fire Department to talk to us about a couple of things. Uh, I've asked him to comment on membrane structures as well as the wild mine, wild land urban interface. So Kurt, we, we had Roy here from a planning perspective. Uh, or from a building perspective, excuse me. Talking about building standards. Can you shed some light on membrane structures, uh, from a fire code perspective? He honed in on was the ocean cores and corks and taps was also mentioned. So your thoughts, please?
My understanding, corks and taps were just growing. That they're permitted. Um, they're really not a fire hazard, uh, for the term.
Okay.
Um, ocean cores have been inspected as a temporary structure. And older than temporary structures to permanent structures. Um, there are definitely fire hazard issues for the term. Uh, like cordless lighting, heating sources, stuff like that. Uh, everything falls back onto the department. The fire code says, say, if it's not a temporary structure, it will fall under the company's.
Oh, okay.
So it'd be, be totally covered by the building.
So any other comments from the commissioners on? The fire code for remembrance?
As far as the longevity of the product on there? It will deteriorate with the elements in our databases.
Yes.
Would that fall back on you guys? As far as saying yes or no?
We would probably towards proving that it still meets the standard.
Okay.
Uh, I, I followed up with the manufacturer of that structure regarding fire code. Um, the, it is non-combustible for the, uh, whatever the IVC code is. It is not a coating, it's the actual material, the threats themselves are non-combustible. And his quote was, it lasts for decades, is basically the life of the structure. Because it's the actual material that's non-combustible, not a coating or a fire coating that's added on later, it's the material itself. Uh, yeah, I, you know, I understand the ocean cores one, but, you know, I'm, I'm just looking at structure itself, it's electrical, and that's a different issue, but the structure itself, um, meets all the IVC codes. And it is the actual material, not a, an, and added-on coating that's applied to the material.
Correct.
At least with this, with their, their, I can't say anything about any other brands, but it's out there that they, they do meet the code.
With this particular one?
This particular one and this particular brand, uh, weapon or all of their material, all of their structures meet it.
Okay, super.
Um.
I, I would just be really curious is if they've really touched it in a marine environment. And that, that would be the only question we'd put back to them. I mean, I know that it meets the code and they say it will last forever or decades, um, but, but I just think our environment out there is, is so much more harsh on basically everything that, that I would I would question it, right? And I would just want to see that from.
And then he did say that they, they, you know, they do provide, uh, certifications and everything. If requests are all, for all their testing and offering professional engineer in that, that, um, you know, and because they do, a lot of communities ask.
Mm-hmm. Kurt, I still have one other question. Uh, how often is that inspected? I mean, are they on a set schedule or just off the top of your?
Actually, no.
Okay, great.
The fact that it went up in temporary, it only took up for eighty days.
Sure.
But infected on that given. The business every year.
Every year, okay. But not this.
Not permitted. I'd definitely take a look at that.
So it's not been inspected since the temporary hundred and eighty days back during the pandemic?
It's been inspected since then.
Okay.
Wouldn't thought it might. They're saying people fear, but I will look at it and make sure there's no. Concern.
So, well, like. Any other questions before we move on to wildland urban interface?
Is, are, are we, as far as, as far as the, the membrane structures, I mean, are, are we? Do we, what, are we going to further this discussion on it, or, I mean, because we, we just discussed the fire part of it, but.
We discussed the building part at last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Kurt was kind enough to give us the, the fire part. I've asked Roy if he'd be willing to come back at our next meeting. And then I'll report forward what we discussed.
Cause I did, because Roy had suggested I come meet him and if I had questions about code.
Correct.
And I did meet him last week, uh, we discussed quite in length the codes and also, um, absolutely the subject that Transient Reynolds came up to, which I think later, but, um, going through the code and the codes and all that, I, I, he's under, you know, I, I think he's pretty much stated that infrastructure comes in and it meets all the IVC codes, the elected, the left. With it, they could be approved as permanent structures or something beyond temporary, let's say that.
Yeah.
Um, so, so that there, there is a, you know, there is possibility.
Yes, he did get said.
Play for.
Yes.
Yes, right, yes, he, and, and, and just to bring that up, you know, and, uh, I mean, if we're gonna, I guess if we want to continue this, I, I've got some other things too, but if we wanted to discuss it later is when, when Roy's here again.
It will be discussed for.
Okay.
I, I think that there's a, another path forward as well, and that is, I mean, we have the special events criteria within our code about what you need to do for that, and they're all listed as temporaries and literally we could deem all of summer as special event in Ocean Shores, and you get your permit for that. And at the end of that, you take the structure down, in that case, it's really just a membrane.
Well, okay, you want it, it's.
So.
Remembering, because I know that membrane that he, they got there's, I actually inspected it myself. You know, with a little liquid, um, and, uh, uh, wow, was there.
What I?
And, so, but, you know, that is, that brain is quite a, a frame, and it's, it's not, when you say portable or, it, it's not quite as portable as you think it is.
No, the metal structure is not, it's really solid because it has to fix to the ground.
Yes.
They think the cover on the company, because nobody's up there in one or two anyway.
There's a, I think what I would like, I just like to throw this up without discussing these, these, uh, structures specifically, I think what we need to take into account is, I mean, we're all looking at how it's being used over here, but there's hundreds of different ways these structures can be used, okay? And I want to look, and I like to continue the discussion as, I, I don't even want to bring, mention ocean cores anymore.
No.
I want to make it the discussion about, you know, is there a place for these? Um, and, you know, we have two different business zones, B one and B two. Why don't, can, can we look at each one separate? I mean, perhaps these structures could work in a B two as storage with no electricity, no heat, but, you know, all, a B two is set up as for areas, in areas where it's not as attractive and it's hidden areas. And maybe there's a place for them. Uh, there's also a place for them, I, I started thinking about I play pickleball, it's a pickleball. You know, what if the community club wants to come and say, hey, can we put a, a membrane structure over the pickleball courts? We can use these year-round. Uh, we're always looking for stuff in the winter for tourists. What if, uh, Pacific Paradise came and said, we want to put a structure over our miniature golf? And so, so we can bring in tourists, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of other different uses for this that, you know, we're trying, we want to try to help businesses out, you know, I think we, we're, we need to look way beyond the ocean core situation.
I totally agree, and that, we, we talked about ocean cores because it's existing. Right? And so that's something that you can look at, we can reach out, we can feel. And so, uh, and then he gave us the pathway forward by mentioning other things such as caps, uh, corks and taps, beds and other places that he's working with. Um, and so there's a path forward, so yeah.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's good that we have, uh, something that we, we can touch and then something we can talk about. So.
We just got to have some generic guidelines that they all go by.
Right, no, exactly, and, and.
Because there are some issues on that particular one over there that nothing's been addressed yet as far as what's right, what's wrong, and if there is, if you look close at it, even on the white structure, it's starting to, because I was there the other day and I don't drink, so I'm a little more observant.
There are.
I only have one.
I, I wouldn't accuse me of nothing. But it's starting to show a little deterioration, even, even after four years, because of the elements that sits in on a daily basis.
I, I see that too, and, you know, is, is it something that, that's why the last meeting, I kind of suggest maybe you call them temporary permanents or something, as long as it passes an inspection every year and they're maintained, then.
And that's the word.
Yeah, yeah, you know, but if you, you know, something be, something more than temporary but less than permanent, right?
I promise you that we will continue this.
Okay.
Um, do we have a public hearing today?
I had an email in my inbox that said this meeting was canceled. And so I notified the applicants.
Oh, no.
That, that there would be no public hearings today. I was shocked.
Who did you get that from, please?
Uh, it, it came from Sarah. But I haven't had a chance to look through and see if I misread something or, or what the deal was. I'm shocked that you guys are having a meeting.
Right, well, I'm glad you're here.
Yeah, and I apologize for, for the mix-up. Um, mostly to my applicants, because they've been waiting, you know? So, yeah, I was a little shocked.
Are they available to come here when we can take care of the rest of the, the agenda here?
Well, I don't, I'm going to do a restart. I don't want to, I've already canceled, I've already canceled, no, it's, there's a mix-up in here somewhere and, and it happens occasionally, you can't be perfect all the time.
This is not great, I can see, I learned it, so.
Yeah, so, you, I would be interested, well, what, what surprised me is only when I saw the agenda did I see the public hearing.
Uh-huh.
So I'm hoping that somehow it can be notified.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll get you the, the materials ahead of the meeting.
Quickly on, so then I would adjust my agenda.
Right.
So not make it as full.
Right, 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 I totally understand.
Oh, but gosh, I'm sorry to hear that.
That's right.
Can suspect it, but.
Yeah, it, it happened, you know, I mean, we're working in a, in a high-speed day of technology.
We are, yeah.
And, you know, we're fumbling occasionally.
Well.
Today was a fun, sometimes.
Well, we'll just continue on.
Yeah.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is wildland urban interface, and Carrie, would you like to take that and Kurt to, to say?
Sure, I'm, I'm really, I'm the editor, so, uh, we were actually out to look into this a while ago, I think I made the first presentation on this, I believe in February, and that is because WAC fifty-one dash fifty-five, as it's lovingly referred to, was going into effect on March fifteenth, and it said it was going to be retroactive to when, I don't know. Most what it entails is going to involve the building code and the fire and what's required in zone areas that are determined to in fact be the wildland urban interface, and in your packet, and of course, it reminds him black and white, there is a map of Ocean Shores and surrounding area. If you go online, you can actually zoom into it, and it's actually a pretty good map to look at. Um, and, and it's been right as far as what is what in our area. The particular areas they call out are the entire downtown core period, you know, I, I don't think we want to have a, a fire that devastates the whole downtown area. As well as the whole front line down Sandown Avenue. And then there's some other ancillary ones too that are more around the, um, I think by, uh, weatherwax, I think down there as well. So what this really means is first of all, our, our fire officials have to deem exactly what the fire hazard is. That's kind of on them to do, and there's a whole rating system and charts and calculations and stuff that they can go through and have to do with topography, whether it's a lot, it has to do with how many days a year is it considered no rain, it has to do with what kind of vegetation are we talking about? Is it, they call it highly combustible, or is it moderately combustible, or they consider it kind of not combustible, knowing that in a severe fire, anything will burn, but things like willow, they can consider that low combustible. Things like myrtle, highly combustible. So, so they kind of look at it that way, but they leave it to the fire officials to merely make the determination on yes, we are in X, Y, or Z category. And those categories dictate how far any structures need to be from that in essence by the line. It also puts the onus, once that determination is made, if it's to be made, that, yeah, we got a hot area up here. The state minimums right now for what they would consider an extreme is a hundred feet from the furthest hanging like say depth to, to, to that, you have to have a hundred feet. But that's the minimum, like in Leavenworth, I think they're a hundred and fifty feet on their minimum right now. So we can always go farther, but we can't go less depending on the category that's determined, and like when I look at Sandown, you've got houses that are this way, then that way, then this way, then that way. I think it would be really difficult to make a determination from that furthest outbuilding or, or decade, and they'd probably have to make it from the property line, makes the most sense to me, but that's just a layman looking at it. But once that determination is made, the onus is really on the homeowner or property owner to do that clearing on the back. My guess is, is because those are all sensitive areas that we would probably all have to work with the Department of Ecology on what can we do? If we don't have any equipment or anything like that, probably all have to be handled. But that's my interpretation and how I read it and how others, how other municipalities are looking at it as well. But that's again, a layperson just reading through page after page after page of this, and it's very long if you looked at. Um, the one thing that it does do when it comes to some of the, if, if you look at, you see a lot of red looking stuff in there, that's because they're literally, um, the administrative folks having an argument about what they want in and what they want out. For a long time, sprinkler systems internal to houses was going to be in. And then they took it out and left it to the local authorities to make that determination, whether that was going to be a part. So it is kind of interesting just to kind of see the internal struggle that they're having with themselves and so. But as it stands right now, that, that kind of word is, a lot of it is stuck with, with the, um, the local fire authorities to make kind of the determination, and then it's up to the building code and the fire code that takes. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Isn't that, that's nonsense.
They just, I mean. So, back to what you were saying, then, so if, if it's deemed non-combustible, like willow or something like that, you still have to maintain the minimum distance to the back.
What is called out for that specific rating? The other thing that you have to do too, which is really interesting, is now when you apply um, for a building or clearing or whatever permit, right, you have to have a site plan, you have to have a third rate plan, you have to have all these things. And you would have to have a vegetation control plan as well that goes into that. So it now becomes another aspect of your building or remodeling. Also, if it's more than fifty percent remodeling, you are under all the new fire code. If it's less than that, you're not.
And I realize we just kind of swung this on you.
Right.
I mean, we realize. But I, I appreciate. But I, welcome to the world, right? I mean, I appreciate your, any thoughts you might have today, and perhaps might be, um, actually on more fair, have you come back next time after you've had a chance to look at. Well, what should?
A little bit. In two thousand thirteen, we, we adopted, um, the C Y, Community Wildfire Protection Act. And a lot of that stuff is going to be spelled out.
Yeah.
So that takes a lot of, and it's international wildlife and urban interface. Which will probably mirror, closely mirror Washington State codes. Cause that's probably where we got most of our information.
Right.
And just whether or not they're going to adopt that, it would make for a lot. It's normal, because they want more control.
Right.
Yeah. Then, I will look at the last one, because I didn't know it was adopted.
Yeah, it was in March of this year.
And it's so new.
I would compare it to this, and the guidelines set for, but, and, and.
Right. I think with the event of China and the cities in California and stuff that just got flooded, um, from wildfire, I think that's just brought up more the forefront of, of, of what's, but also the other thing it, it can and probably does impact is do we have the correct number of fire hydrants on those zones that are deemed more flammable? Yeah, and I would believe that we, I mean, I drive down.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at our button here, we have plenty of on the shore, just matter of access.
Yeah. Yeah, and we know how difficult that can be for the fire trucks.
Yeah, it is unfaceable.
You know what, I wasn't going to say anything.
Don't, don't worry about it, we did, we already did, it's where you speak at. It needs to go on, I wish I had.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's a dangerous place up there.
It is.
Trying to get anything done.
And there's plenty of times, we've had a lot of near misses out there.
Yeah, we have.
For, for saying.
Yes, we have.
So can we invite you back?
Absolutely.
With, uh, maybe after a chance to look at it.
Yeah.
Uh, to see if they've changed anything to what we are perfectly doing.
Okay.
I mean, I, I appreciate it. And because it's so new, I'm sure the community would appreciate it.
I, I, I just think, I, I think I can speak for them, I live on Sandown, I think a lot of the they're just really concerned with the vegetation, how much it's growing and what, and, and right now, we can't do anything about it.
The biggest challenge I see is the undeveloped properties.
Correct.
And not changing.
Yeah, and, and, and the space.
People, these property rights, so.
Mm-hmm.
Fire sitter relating for it.
Right.
Yeah, so, so look more further on the undeveloped properties, then, so somebody wants to develop a lot that has this, that backs up to, you know, like on Sandown and that. Okay, we have a local requirement for clearing that you have to keep so much in that, but I'm assuming that this code would supersede our code and that you would have to clear everything from the back of your home to this, no matter what's there.
Well, that's how I interpreted. But that becomes the big question. We've got things to.
Right.
Traditional wildlife and everything else.
Exactly.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, fish, okay, you know, you, they, they're telling this thing's telling the property owner, hey, you have to go off your property and start taking stuff down and fish, or whoever the forestry department, they're gonna, and they're gonna say, hey, what are you doing? You can't go do that.
Right.
So it's.
It's a complex issue.
You're obviously being commanded to do something off of their own property.
That's what I, I can't, I can't believe that they can do that.
No. See, it's, it's complex, because, okay, we go back to a property law and then the state law says you have to take it from, I'll just use fifty to a hundred for our discussion. Like you said, a hundred and fifty feet is what Leavenworth did. They've got their own specific issues there, but let's just for our discussion, we go fifty to a hundred, well, is that the homeowner's responsibility, is it the city's responsibility, because it's state law, is it the state's responsibility? It, it was easy to be done, as I always say.
So in, 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 in in the wetland urban interface, it really does very clearly state whose responsibility is, which is the good thing. It really clearly states that once the determination has been made, that in fact you are in an area of highly combustible material, that it is the homeowner or property owner's responsibility to keep that maintained. You cannot cut stuff down and leave it there, it has to be hauled out. Um, I think it'll be the Department of Ecology that determines how, meaning you probably can't bring heavy equipment, I'll look at the way it ditched clear out that we did ladder. That, no, that wasn't equipment that did that, that was busy hand. So that's where I see the argument is going to come, because, yeah, in Leavenworth right now, you've got, it doesn't matter if it's on your property or not, if it's a hundred and fifty feet away from your structure, it got to come down and you're responsible for it.
Well, one thing is every piece property owned by somebody.
Right.
So they won't force you to go off your property, play something else or something.
Uh, no, see, see, that backs up all the city and state property, that's right, it's the wildland, that's why they consider.
State would be required.
In the movie, it's, you know, homeowner is responsible. And I think the reason why is because in our litigious society, it would just mean you'd be able to sue everybody to pieces.
But if it's the homeowner that doesn't do it, the, the onus is not on the city. So.
Well, kind of. Built the name of the property.
That, that's what it kind of suggests, that you've got to come with that vegetation plan.
Marshall, please.
So, so I can tell you that our local regulation on the Dunes Protection Act prohibits anybody but the city from doing anything within that property.
But, but that's why I say, that's why these things are, they're in opposition to each other, they really are.
And then.
Go ahead.
And then the, the next level is the state and federal level, so we have, we, we have what we're from my understanding, the document we're discussing now is a state document.
The state document.
The wet, the wetlands that are out there are regulated by the federal government.
Correct.
So we, we've got a kind of a cascading deal that we're going to have to figure out.
But there is a, but there is a federal assault for it.
For the.
For the, what they call the weak, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I have to figure out.
Yeah, exactly.
I can tell you that we did get authorization from the state and the Department of, uh, or the Army Corps of Engineers to do the fifty-foot fire break in front of the motel system, but we had to fully mitigate all of the impacts to the critical areas. And I think as long as we have a method to mitigate, then, you know, they're going to allow us to go forward, and, and we're working on several different options right now, because we're running out of bank credits. Uh, we blew a full credit of, of wetland mitigation on the existing fire break, and, um, you know, that costs, you know, thirty or forty residential lots from being developed, because we're chewing up wetland credits, creating a fire break. So we got to come up with another alternative, and we're working on that, Kurt.
Well, we need to work with the state to say, hey, you actually the ones that come up with this, you're the ones putting in conflict, what do we do? We, we have health and safety of our citizens to have to worry about and protect these lands that all happen to conflict, so we really will need their guidance, there's no question.
Yeah, it'll be a team effort for sure.
Yeah.
So I appreciate the discussion. So I appreciate the discussion because I think it's, it's because it's so new. It needs to be looked at and, and I am formulated on, you know. How are we gonna, how are we gonna handle it? It's not like the word mitigation necessarily in this case, but how, how are we gonna handle? This new legislation that's only three or four months old.
And then, in, in one. Uh, one law doesn't apply to every law like I did either, so, or one code doesn't apply to every law, and every law is unique in its own way.
Well, in this, what they do is they literally call the areas out of the map. So, and unfortunately, I don't have color to see the code or anything, but if you go out and look on the website, it really is, it, it does kind of spell it out. And it makes sense given the recent fire disasters that we've had over the last, you know, three to five years. That that is what they're trying to protect is those places that are in the most dangerous areas or potentially dangerous.
Sure, could you do me a favor and just give the website if you have it?
Yeah, I think I do.
So it's on the record, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, HTTPS slash slash S B C C dot Y dot gov. And then that'll get you there. And then it's just by default filed over that, but you'll, you'll be able to get to it from that, and it is in the package.
Yeah, thank you. That'll be helpful for someone who's just.
Yeah.
Listening.
Lots of it.
And report.
And if you just go up and if you, if you in your search criteria, just put WAC fifty one dash fifty five. It'll take it up all the stuff.
No, I want to ask you, I'm, I'm, I've only been here for a year. Has there been problems with grass or brush fires here in Ocean Shore?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it is.
Kurt, anything else that you. Before you take a look at this in a calmer way? No, calm, no. So can, can we invite you back then?
Absolutely, when would you want to back?
Um, can you come back next meeting, which would be?
July nine?
July nine too. When I just answer you in, uh, and have a give you some time to, uh, pick again. Super, well, I appreciate it. Anything else for Kurt today? Super, well, you're welcome today, or you're, thank you so much for coming. Thank you so much for coming, appreciate it, thanks. Any other discussion along those lines before we move on, Marshall, do you have any? Along the signs or complicated?
Yeah, it's gonna be complicated. It's just leaving it at that.
Yeah.
We're, we're, until we have a, a mitigation plan, it's gonna be. A challenge.
It is so new, see that's. Okay. Okay, well, moving on, the next thing that we have on our agenda is a minimum square footage. Uh, six hundred and fifty square feet. I have sent that forward, uh, for bounce consideration. I just, uh, for transparency sake, I added it in just to say that that has been sent forward. In addition, the next one is ordinance for forty percent residential. And that as well has been sent for, uh, to council for consideration. Any thought by commissioners on either one of them?
Just ask them all in detail.
We have, yeah, and, and I sent them, and I was actually expecting one of them to make the agenda today. Uh, and, and it didn't, uh, because if you look at the council agenda, it's pretty busy. Uh, so it didn't make the, so hopefully it'll make, uh, the next, the next council meeting. Which leads us to trans rental, uh, at the end. Um, so. We've been talking about this, uh. For some time. Uh, Thor. Uh, on the trans rentals, you had made a suggestion that we amend what we were looking at. And so I did. Uh, and so, if, did you have a chance to look at what's in the packet concerning trans rentals currently?
I did not look at the revision you made, I'm sorry to say, I. I. For some reason.
Okay.
My mind throws up, I don't know what it is.
So what the changes are, is prohibition in, uh. Seventeen point five zero point zero five five under trans rentals. Prohibition of trans rental with exceptions. No owner, person, or entity shall, we've taken out the word occupy. And it just says use, operate, rent, or lease, nor advertise, offer, or negotiate to use. Lease or rent a dwelling in R one, R two, et cetera, et cetera. Except. The one exception's listed. So we really just got rid of the word occupy and added the word advertise. In that section. And that is really. The only change to the document.
No, I looked at that last time. That, that's fine.
No, I took out of there all the other items about needing a. Uh, a business license, whatever, that is covered in other parts of the code. And I thought just for this, uh, and this was, uh. This was, this has been around for a while, because on ten May twenty twenty two, this body. Voted that in, and it just hasn't gone forward yet. So I just wanted to bring it up again.
Let me, then, so then these changes here are actually from still twenty twenty two?
They are.
Okay.
Yes, and so what I'm looking for today is. Are you comfortable with the way it reads to again, send that to council to make those changes? On trans rentals.
So, so basically this doesn't change anything as far as where transit run over loud or anything, it's just changing this word.
Yeah, now, having said that, we can take a step back and we can look at. Do we wanna end this document at areas? Where we would like to see transit. We can do that, or we can do that separately. So what's the thought of the commission?
Don't we talk about it now? So you just get her done?
I mean, we, we could go, we should, we could allow, uh, trans rentals in all zones.
Um, can we get, I see you got a zoning map there. Do we have nasal or something we can set that on so we can actually take a look? We could, I had some thoughts on.
What we.
No, I just know the, the people.
So.
Anybody else see it?
That, well, that, that happens.
Okay, so. I guess we can just talk about it.
Yeah, so the, the question becomes, do we propose to allow trans rentals in all zones? Just certain zones? Or how do we wanna approach it? Um, or do we just wanna leave it the way it is? Um, they're all good options, and there might be some other options we haven't talked about yet. Um. So, but.
I have a few thoughts. So right now, it's allowed in B one and B two. Okay, so B, so basically B one is all pretty much downtown, and then you got an area of B one and B two. That's over by Damon Point, that area there. So right now, that's the only areas where they're all. So, looking at the. At the, um, zoning map, and by the way, our zoning map is. It's from two thousand eight, and actually, there's, in, in this packet that we got for the public hearing. Those, there's slots one hundred to one oh six or something that's OYHUP, that's actually B ones, but on our zoning map, they are still showing us R. So, um. It looks to me like. Everything. Uh, let's say basically south of the downtown area. Is, is all residential zones about ninety, looking at the map. Roughly ninety percent, maybe even more, is zone R. Then you have, after that, you have the combination of the Rs, twos, and through whatever. So, um. I don't pardon you, thinking if, you know, our, our one is probably predominantly occupied by. Uh, you know, single, obviously, you have single family homes, and they are probably most, I would assume mostly owner occupied. Maybe, I guess, I guess the, before we get into this, who's? Is there? And Thor probably answered this, is there a huge demand for transient rentals number one? That, that's not being fulfilled? Or number two, I, I guess who's driving this? Is there a lot of people who currently have homes? That are pushing to have them as transient rentals? And trying to get the code changed. Thor, would you like to comment on that?
Not that I've heard of, but. I think that in the, in the past, the. Idea of allowing transient rentals in more areas has been thoroughly shot down by the citizens.
I was just gonna say, yeah. Twice.
Yeah, I.
So, yes.
I think it's where we have to tread lightly. Uh, if we have a part of this. Proposed ordinance that we wanna see passed. I would, I would. I would, uh, leave out any suggest that you're gonna allow them anywhere unless you wanna see the thing go down in flames.
Okay, well, maybe, and, and maybe we need to address what the changes we, that we're talking about and approve them and then. We'll be on the, yeah, there's two separate.
It'll be, it'll be a separate issue.
Yeah, could, could you write, it is very, very political. Everybody has their opinion about it. And I think there's so much emotion behind it, whether it's based in reality or not, doesn't matter at that point. That I think if we wanna pass something. At least to get it cleaned up, and I think that's what our proposal does. I think it's absolutely.
Maybe we ought to just go ahead and take care of this item that we've already had here, because that's basically just changing a couple words. For clarification, and then if we wanna continue this discussion, we can.
Yeah, I think if council throws it over the fence to us and say, hey, we're, we're hearing back from our constituents that they really want more of this. Then, so get it.
Well, and then, so, yeah, but, so, um. Yeah, I think that. The enlightenment that Marshall provided, I was not personally aware that it'd been on the ballot twice and failed miserably twice. Um, that, that speaks volumes to me. Here, to council. I think we should consider that and vote.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
We have a second? All in favor of sending this forward as written?
Aye.
Aye.
So. Okay. Thanks, we can certainly bring out the, um, the maps.
No, I'm not sure if I, I, but my, just, I was just saying that, that, you know, ninety percent. At least ninety percent of the area according to just looking at the map is R. Then you've got all the rest of the, the Rs. And, and I'm, you know, thinking that. At a minimum, we need to leave the Arons alone. We wanna try some additional areas on a truck basis. Maybe try some, either like R sevens, R eights, R, I don't know how many single family homes are in those. Where they're all. And, and I guess it would probably help the discussion if you knew how many. Of the areas outside R one were actually single family and that, um, that. And it's probably a chore to do, uh, but it would be, be good to know. And, and it'd be good then, yeah, this would be even harder, how many of these homes are actually owner occupied and how many are owned by people who don't live here.
And I think Steve, one thing to help, you know, you understand the area a little bit more is. Some of them, I mean, a lot of them are vacations, and a lot of people aren't registered to vote here.
Mm-hmm.
So even if they may have a desire to do so, doesn't matter. So, so it'd be interesting to kind of see those statistics, because I think there probably are ways of doing it. We could make it conditional use and make that very expensive, so they'd have to think twice before doing it, and all their neighbors. Who are the people that should care for them, you know, could be at the public hearing.
And it's very difficult to make it temporary.
Correct.
Because that's the, all the other, oops, you have to, you know, the business licenses, et cetera.
And, and speaking of that, as, as I said, I had a conversation with Roy, he was up at the top, the top of the transient rentals game. He made me aware of some things that I wasn't aware of. And probably most people who are weekend, are weekend homeowners, who own, own homes here. And perhaps even the person who's looking to rezone their house at the worst we'll say in the hearing today is. You know, once a home is a transient rental, it goes under. The IBC code, not the residential code.
Correct.
And the majority of the houses here probably would not meet the code for transient rental.
They'd be retro.
Because they have, first of all, they have to be having a fire protection system. They have to have sprinklers. Um, the biggest thing I see is, um, a house that's more than one story. The stair risers can only be a maximum seven inches, where most residential, where residential is up to nine inches. And most two-story houses, your risers are seven and a half to eight inches, right? So you would have to have all new stairs put in, and, and Roy's very familiar with these, and I'm sure he would enforce it. So somebody who just thinks like, you know, they, they're, okay, it might be nice to rent my house out here, so I can make a lot of money. The paper, you know, you're talking, you could be dumping fifty to a hundred thousand dollars in the home to make it compatible for transient rental. I don't think a lot of people realize that when they. And he also told me. That there's a program that the city, I don't know who the cities, I can't remember what, what it was called, but. It's a, or it's a, or it's a service that they go and they'll take, they, the service goes through all the advertisements for Airbnb's. And VRBOs in your area, from plots on the map. He said there were over a hundred, I wanna say a hundred and three. That are outside B one and B twos that are advertised here, illegal.
There is that. Okay, so we will table that discussion for another spirit of time. I mean, it is. Marshall, do you have any, any thoughts, um, you know, on this issue?
I, I do. Um, the areas that are zoned B one and B two currently. Are being consumed by transient rental, uh, construction. And, and I've got contractors that are wanting to cite their commercial or industrial businesses here in Ocean Shores. In the area that was zoned for that, cannot even find a lot because the prices have gone. You know, we're, we're talking excess of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for a commercially zoned lot. Not because it's great commercial, but because you can put a transient rental, so. We're, we're causing our people that supply industrial type needs to the city in development and stuff like that. To be enforced to look elsewhere to cite their business, because the, the, the market for transient rentals pushed them out of Ocean Shore, so. Our pyramid zoning and the fact that transient rentals are only allowed in the B one and B two zones. Has caused us some harm in our business, uh, business districts, so that's, that's my thought, so.
Yeah, thank you for that. It's, yeah, we don't, we don't wanna drive the way this. Okay, any other thoughts on trans rentals before we move on to camping? This is a new one, camping lot, stand, Nicole sitting there, I have a smile, um. She's compiling all the surveys that were done. And. We don't know what those surveys, the results are yet, and I understand, uh, they'll be released sometime next month.
The next council meeting, not this one, with an excellent, so it's gonna do a presentation.
So July ninth, those will come up. And so, um, I just thought I'd bring it up, um, given that it's current. And so that the commission could have a discussion. As to what thoughts were about camping lots, and of course. That is covered in fifteen point one, two point zero two zero and zero two five. Uh, of the code. So, um. Currently, it's ninety days. And the proposal is to go to from ninety to one hundred and twenty days. Um, and there's, there's gonna be a lot of discussion about this, of course, as it hasn't been. Some will say no, just because ninety's enough. Uh, and some will say, well, why aren't we doing what Grace Harper says we can do of one hundred and eighty days?
State.
Pardon?
One twelve.
State law, yeah, so what the state allows, one hundred and eighty. And of course, really, I, I don't wanna answer the question, I just think it's kind of baby steps, right? Um, we're at ninety now, go to one twenty instead of one eighty. Uh, so any thoughts? I just wanted to bring it up to get, uh, get a conversation going, knowing that it's going to, uh.
So I'm more familiar with this than I wanted to be. My, my first thought is, it's in the building code, so why is it even in that section of threat? My, my first thought is, it's in the building code, so why is it even in that section, it's recreation. There are also his temporary housing that they entwangle in with camping, which is not, that will haunt. I see just general conflicts in the code itself and even more. Um, doesn't make a lot of sense to me, we also did have this discussion. That commission, I I wanna say it was a year and a half ago, we were asked, what, what are you guys thinking? And at that point in time, we said, not hundred and twenty days, connections is probably okay. And I don't know where that went, but we did well to counsel and they probably never took a vote on it. The other thing that we talked about on camping lot, which will be the next hot topic on, is what size, if any, uh. Structure would we allow on that, meaning like a, a, a little, um.
Accessory.
Ex, a little accessory or or even just a, a shed, what size shed? And that's gone back and forth onto what is square footage allowed on that, and I think we have that to a hundred and twenty square feet. Um, so that probably my two cents on it is that. It's gonna be what it's gonna be with people, I do think the longer they stay, we could, we could hear it and say, if if you have no improvements on your land whatsoever, it's ninety days and that's what you get. But if you've got improvements, then why not the one twenty, because those folks are paying for their water bill, the minimum, all year. And they don't get to use it, even if they turn it off, yeah, they're not consuming water, but they still have to play the flat rate, they're still playing their insulin, they're still playing everything else that comes in that utility bill and. Personally, want to encourage people to come here and spend money.
I mean, personally, I've got a lot that's undeveloped, camp on it ninety days, I don't, but but it's the opportunity that I have. But for those that have power, water and sewage, they have ninety days, but they're paying those fees three hundred and sixty-five days. So if it's an improved lot, as opposed to the one that's not improved. It isn't reasonable that they're paying for three hundred and sixty-five days to have access to the twenty days. Now, will they use it? I don't know, but that's the opportunity. I mean, you have ninety days of opportunity, people don't use that. If they have a hundred and twenty days, will they use it? No, but they have the opportunity to use it. And if they're paying for three hundred and sixty-five days, I'd like the opportunity to use it for a hundred and twenty of those three hundred and sixty-five days. So we'll see how it goes, I just wanted to throw it out. Um. Marshall? I know you.
I don't. I don't, um, I, I, I kind of, you know, see your point that these people are contributing to. The total cost for those of you who live here three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Um, you know, they are contributing to the fire department, to the sewer department, to the water department. Uh, and and you are sharing the burden with those folks, um. So I I see your concept of providing a little more opportunity. But then there's the other side of it is, you know, the, do, do you want to force people into a higher level of developments so that you get a higher assessed tax rate? Um, you know, that was the argument before is we wanna provide a little bit of opportunity. And then if they wanna become members of Ocean Shores and build a house and and come on full bore, so, and and I don't. You know, I I I see both sides of that argument and I don't feel strongly one way or the other, um, it's just if we're gonna make a change, let's make a change that is easily enforced. So that's always where I go back to, um, give me clear language that, um, you know, allows people to go that way.
Sure. Anyone else?
Uh, I, I think, I think a hundred and eight, twelve, a hundred and twenty days is reasonable, I think ninety days. I, it, with the ninety days, you can't stay from Memorial Day through Labor Day. You're gonna have to take your camper off your lot in order to have it that, and a hundred and twenty days gets you through mid-May to mid-September. Um, so I, I think it's reasonable, um. And. And maybe, I, my first thought was the fourth survey that came out that I, fifty days might be, you know, that way you can get through the full month of May and the full month of September. When, you know, when the weather's nice, I, you, it, when people are here, it helps our county. Here, uh, uh, you know, and, um. You know, not that we're, would have been a hundred and eighty days, I bought a camper a lot instead of buying a house here, because I could have full time back and forth between Arizona and here, but, um. And so, again, there's, well, if you make it too long, then then people are gonna, I, they don't want people using that. People living in the RV.
But see, it. You have to have a permit to do that, you have to come in and stop here, they're permitting you, and now that you're increasing manpower on code enforcement. They will be able to do a better job of monitoring. How long these people stay there and what condition the lot is in, it's still well or not, they, they're there for the camping or if they're living there full time and selling stuff out their back window.
Mm-hmm.
Thor, do you have a thought? He's busy.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, and and I'm just on the corner, if there was a way that, thinking instead of, I, if your camper's there and you're not, it still counts as a day. And to me, I'd like to see a way to try to make it where it only counts if you're there, but I know that's really hard to, you know, to.
Then it comes to store, and you're you're classified it as a lot to store because maybe you don't have room in your neighborhood up in Seattle to. Or you wanna clean up your property in Seattle, bring it down here to store it and that opens up a big can of worms.
Well, and that's there, the other person that was trying to do a zoning change today so they can have RV storage and make change to a B. Because RV storage is at a premium here in the winter because you have to move it, is, I mean, can't, can there be a way where you can s- store it on your lot during the winter, but, you know? You know, I mean, most of the time, you, you, most of the campers now have the slide outs and everything, you know that nobody's there when the slide outs are off.
Thor, do you have any thoughts on the camping lots?
He's froze up.
Yeah.
He's out.
Okay. All right, well, let's move on, and I just wondered, because it's so, it's so new. That, uh, Thor, are you with us? Okay.
Programing in.
Um, any commission, uh, reports from the members today? Yeah, okay, um. Other comments, any comments from in? Yes, sir.
Just wanna verify that website, it's B C C?
Oh, I need that. Now I have to get back to what, an easier way for you to get there might be to in your search bar, just type in W A C fifty-one dash fifty. And it's gonna bring up everything for you, including that.
Fifty-one dash fifty?
Correct. That's for Washington Administrative Code, as opposed to.
Any comments from a bar? Any comments from a bar, Nina, you said you had some comments.
Well, you didn't have the quote-unquote public hearing, so, uh, I'll reserve my comments for another time.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Any other comments from a bar? No comments from a bar? Okay.
Thank you, Mark, this is Susan.
Susan, go ahead.
Thank you, do you still have two vacancies on the planning commission?
At this moment, we do, yes.
Thank you very much.
Uh, our next meeting will be July ninth, two P M in this room. Uh, secretary for the next meeting will be Commissioner Ward. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at two fifty-nine P M.
Now, we're getting, uh, shooting at the public hearing.